To approve the agenda, there's amendments.
I move that we, I have a change. I move that we move number eight, resolution thirteen twenty twenty-four on the bonds up before the public comment.
Like number four?
Because Maggie has another meeting.
Okay, understand that?
Yep, I'll second that motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I'll say a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well, is Maggie, can you hear us on there?
I can hear you guys, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we bumped you up here to go.
Thank you. Thank you very much, I really appreciate that. I'm Maggie Berger with Spear Financial, we're the financial advisors to the county. Today, Melissa and I watched the bids come in on one million four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of general obligation, solid waste disposal bonds, series twenty twenty-four. I will remind you that these bonds are going to be paid by the solid waste commission. Although they're done as general obligation bonds, that's really for cost savings. It's much cheaper to issue general obligation bonds than it is to issue revenue bonds, so we do appreciate that. We did receive two bids today, and we are recommending that we would award to the low bidder, which is Robert W. Baird, out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. Their interest rate today was a three point six seven nine seven percent. That's the true interest cost, and on page two of our packet that we sent, the interest rates all the way down on this loan are four percent. And we were anticipating this could be as high as, you know, four twenty-five to four fifty, so we're really happy to see that four percent. We really believe interest rates have started to come down these last few weeks, with the Federal Reserve not moving on interest rate at their last couple of meetings. The Robert Baird is also going to pay a premium of approximately twenty-four thousand dollars. And so that premium is just money that will come back to the county for the use for the project itself. We all know that projects never are under what you say that they're going to be, so that extra premium dollars, and those premium dollars, what that is, is, you know, they're saying they want four percent interest rates to be able to charge you four percent, but today's market was probably in that three six seven to three seven five range, so they have to give you some money upfront to make that all happen, so that they can hopefully be the winners of the deal. It was closed auction today, we did have a bid from Northland Securities as well. Northland also bid a four percent all the way down, but they were not offering as large of a premium, so their interest rate only came in at a three eighty-two, and so they would be in second place. These, these bonds are out there for ten years, and with that, they are callable after June one of twenty thirty-one. So the very last three years of those bonds, if interest rates are lower, they could be refinanced. They could just be paid as-is, and if, if interest rates were higher, again, just pay as-is, if you had money ahead. If the landfill wanted to pay those bonds off early, it's that June one of twenty thirty-one date, but they would be able to do that. So I would answer any questions that you have. Today, you are awarding these bonds, and then in a couple of weeks at your meeting, you will have authorizing and issuance documents. They will simply be a couple of resolutions that kind of fill in all the blanks, just because the bids were taken today. And then the money will be in the account for the county to disperse out to the landfill by February eighth. That is the date of closing, and there's no meeting date needed on that date, so.
Excellent. Well, so we just need to pass the resolution?
You are just passing a resolution tonight, awarding and locking in those interest rates.
Okay, I make a motion that we pass resolution thirteen dash two zero two four.
I will awarding general obligation.
Yes.
Solid waste disposal bond, series twenty twenty-four.
Yes.
I'll second that.
All right, another motion in a second. We heard the bidding process, and then we're picking the low bidder. Any other discussion on that? If not, we'll vote.
Mayor?
Yes.
Bones?
Yes.
Yes.
Good, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time this evening. Have a wonderful night, and I'm sure I'll be seeing you soon about the jail, so thanks so much.
Thanks Maggie.
Thanks.
All right, bye-bye.
Okay, I'll go to public comment now. Back to number, what was number four, public comment? Any behalf of the comment?
Well, this is Wayne, I don't know if I should wait until the wind generator part of this, I mean wind turbine, or if I should public comment, you know, whichever you want.
Well, you, go ahead right now if you want.
Okay, well, I just wondered, first of all, if, if, if all the supervisors have seen my emails, because I've seen.
Wayne Anderson. Go ahead.
So I'm just wondering if you've seen any of my emails, I've received no comment back except from Judy on something about where I lived. Have you received those? Because, I mean, I didn't even get a thanks for sending it kind of thing, an acknowledgement at all. So that's my first question.
Yeah, I, I saw them, and I've talked with you at length, not since your email, but we've discussed all those issues. So we're.
Okay, so. Okay, so I guess my main one at this point is the decommissioning. Do you, do you have where, do you have in your mind where I'm coming from on that? That, I mean, it's just, you have wording in, in a lot of pages of what you want, but I would strongly suggest that you go for getting a plan that has already been implemented from whoever decides to develop, develop in the county to prove that they have successfully decommissioned these kind of projects in the past. So if that makes sense.
I'm having a hard time understanding.
Yeah, Wayne, you're kind of breaking up a little bit. We're having a little hard time understanding what you're, what you're saying.
Okay, hang on. Okay, is this any better?
Yeah, yeah, maybe.
So my point was, in the decommissioning, whoever is cited for this project, or wins this project, whatever, I would suggest, before they get it, that they show you they have decommissioned another project of similar size and, and scope, et cetera, so they can give you proof or, or some confidence that they can handle that portion of it. It's one thing to say it on paper, but it's another thing to have, you know, when you go interview somebody, you like to know they have had the experience in the, in the issues that you want to hire them for. It's the same thing, if you think about it.
Yep, sure.
Okay, so. And I guess my only other question is, with, with these emails, are they entered, entered into the record on this issue, or do I need to read them in public, or how does that work?
What is it, your issues, or?
You want your emails to be part of the record?
Yes. And I mean, I can read them now if you want me to, and that can become the comments in public, or you can attach them, save some time, and just attach them to wherever you put them, as archives.
I'd say we can put them in the archives.
Yeah, I mean, and what I've done, Wayne, with all the, like, I've gotten other emails from other people and stuff, and I try to keep them all together.
I would imagine so.
Yeah, and so that I can at least revisit them, and. So, but yeah, we'll get those, we'll get those put in our folder with all the other stuff. Is that?
So are there, are there any questions from you guys on your end? I mean, I, I know what I've said, I'm kind of, are there any comments or questions?
Well, on your issue with decommissioning, I want to know if they've already decommissioned a project, well, a lot of projects are pretty new, there might not be that many that have been decommissioned, but in our ordinance, we do have, they have to, we have ways to figure how much money it might cost, and they have to put real money in the bank to, to pay for that, not just promissory, so that's how we tried to handle that issue.
And, yeah, and with that.
I got it.
We set some expectations about when they're decommissioning, so they would have to, you know, live up to those expectations.
Okay, I mean, I, I don't know, yeah, okay, I mean, is the money coming in upfront? Because you live up to the expectations, when you go bankrupt, there's an expectation is you don't have anything you're obligated to at that point. So I'm just trying to help you guys avoid that kind of scenario, is all I'm doing.
Yeah, Wayne, the thing that we've tried to do is, we said, we want real money, we want escrow set up that will cover anything.
Okay.
Down the road, including on road use agreements for repairs and so forth, and decommissioning. We want that money to be there, we don't want to go by somebody's word.
If they would go bankrupt.
Right, that's right. I mean, I'm not, I don't know who's going to get it, and I don't disrespect anybody, but, you know, money talks, and all the rest of it walks, and I'll just leave it that way, okay?
Yep.
Okay, all right, well, if you guys are comfortable, you've done your best to your ability to get that covered. I'm just suggesting that if there was an example out there, that might give you more information. You might go, oh, you know, I really didn't even think of, you really had to do this part too, you know? I mean, you can't, you're not perfect, you can't think of everything, so I was just saying, well, if there is another example out there, that might be something to look into. But if there isn't, no one's ever decommissioned any of these anywhere, and that's that, I suppose, you know?
Good.
Okay, all right, well, thanks for your time for me also. Okay, take care, good luck.
Thanks for your, yes, we'll look into that. Okay. JD, you're next, because there's no other comment right now. So I think you're good, go ahead.
Good evening, J.D. King, Page County Engineer, it's a crisp winter evening in county. Kind of old-fashioned, maybe winter finally caught up with us. Sent the engineer update out Wednesday morning. So we had a large snow event, started, started Monday. We did send the trucks out for one round Monday afternoon. Had everybody lined up to go, coming at five, we were out five-thirty with the trucks and blades. I'll remember, we're down one blade. That's up in Minnesota at the Ziegler shop, so we have seven blades in our regular districts, not the winter district where we add a blade. And the snow was heavy and wet, and so pushing was slow. And we chose to detach motor graders north and south onto the pavements to, to get the drift or the wind roll of this heavy snow off the shoulder, so it wasn't there, because we anticipated, or the forecast was for winter, winter blizzard blowing snow later in the week, you want to get that off the road, so it doesn't contribute to drifting. So we were slower yet on the, on the gravels. We did get across all the gravel that I know of. Although people have been calling in saying, you know, don't forget us here and there, and we've been checking on that. We did have some minor truck issues, hydraulic hose leaks. And a couple of motor graders had some regen issues, and we have a part for that. I mean, the, the cat technician came and got them to regen, and of course, we're pushing hard, so hopefully that'll work a little better, but we've had good service from our cat guy. Not written down on the, on the sheet as the next cat motor grader, the new cat motor grader is scheduled to, we should have it scheduled in here for delivery by mid, by mid-February. So it won't be months away, there still may be some winter.
Nice.
And, and to mitigate the machines that's down in Minnesota, we're going to rent, rent another motor grader for a month to, so we can run the snow round.
Is that the, the re, reconditioned machine that's back in Minnesota, is that different?
No, that's a different one.
Are we reconditioning this one?
No.
No, okay, we're renting another, what are we doing with that one?
We're going to rent one for a month.
Okay, but what are we doing with the one that's down?
Yeah, what's wrong?
The one that's down is in Minnesota.
What's wrong with?
What's wrong with it?
The transmission, it was that transmission leak that we discussed two, three weeks ago. It's been gone for, it's been gone for a month.
That's the number eight?
It's number eight.
So are we going to redo it, or are we just going to?
No, it's, it's going to be redone.
We're going to rebuild it?
We're going to rebuild the transmission, or the part of the transmission that was broken. It's a link between the transmission and the hydraulic. It's a fairly expensive fix. There was some work this week on the one ninetieth street bridge there north on M-56, but he's not coming tomorrow. The east pier is all formed up, ready to go and covered, so that when the weather cooperates for several days of decent weather, they can pour that concrete there. Now, they've been working on the west pier and the west abutment. So we'll look forward to seeing them early next week. And we're doing some public development on the J-53 project and bridges. I got a technician headed to to train next week in Boone at the community college there, and I did get the budget turned in Tuesday, Tuesday to the auditor. Questions for me?
You said something about, is it J-53 that they want more information?
Right, there's, there's a resolution, this is for the RPA meeting, due the end of January. I need a resolution to go along with the project amendment that we did last week. I'd like to get that in front of the board as soon as, soon as possible, so you know, next week it'd be fine, or, or some other time when we're doing even, even budget, budget work that's that's announced or on an agenda, I'll put a, have a resolution ready to go for that J-53 project.
For the end of January, is that what you said?
Yes.
As long as it's in January, though, right?
Right, I would prefer it as soon as possible, so it doesn't get pushed off. You know, some, some debacle will happen on the, you know, the next, the twenty-fifth of January or something.
Okay. On the tomorrow, depending what the weather does, how bad it is, please talk to you in the morning about, maybe about five o'clock, see what you think, we'll go and look at the roads. See what you think, what's going on, conditions, the roads for the courthouse, decide what we're going to do. I had Brendan reach out to me, they asked about that, Wayne. If it's too bad, we'll.
Okay, we'll have guys.
All the courthouses were closed around this Monday.
Yeah, now, so who makes that call?
The board does.
Oh, okay, I didn't know if we had the power to.
And actually.
Because I would have suggested.
You would have suggested it?
But maybe that we should have been closed, I don't know.
And I think it's not so much for, it's for the employees.
Right.
But it's also for the people. You'd be amazed in the years past, how there are some people who want to get out to prove that they can get out, and they're the people who should at least be.
Yeah.
And we have ended up actually settling lawsuits, because people have gotten out on days like this, and then they've fallen, and so they've sued us.
And you, or, we had somebody call today.
Congratulations, yeah. And the, and the things are cleared, the sidewalks are cleared. So that's amazing, but yeah, I can remember one, we paid either between ten and fifteen thousand dollars.
So does that, so, oh yeah, so does that take, do we need to communicate?
Yes.
The three of us to vote on something like that, or is it just?
In the morning, it's a majority.
Okay.
Yeah, and actually.
Five-thirty is right.
Actually, the elected officials. Five-thirty?
Guys, out.
At five-thirty, we're all excited by six, have an idea.
But the elected officials can actually close their offices without our permission.
Yeah, that's why I didn't, I didn't know if that was.
But that doesn't take care of the, like, the assessor, public health, and the rest of those.
Okay.
So we need to make a decision.
So we just need to. And, okay.
We'll reach out to you in the morning, people out, we'll see what it looks like, we'll go and look at it.
See, so. So I need to be up early?
Yeah, to get up early.
We'll call you early.
But, so we'll try by six to figure something out, so everybody can know. I'm just going to make sure you'd be ready for a call.
I will be ready.
Okay.
Okay, I got the next agenda item is a, a bunch of twelve IMO permits for fiber. Sent you a map, it's in the south-central part of the county. Need approval for those.
They're approval for IMO's approval, or IMO's map.
We approved the IMO utility permit.
I'll second.
Okay, you got a motion of second, we've seen the maps.
Permits, I guess, one through twelve.
Motion of second on that, any other discussion on? We'll vote, I guess.
Mayor?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
You have a sign, we'll know later, those, okay. Okay, we have a next step, the board applicants, and we received.
Do you have a list of?
Veterans Affairs is Pam Belknap.
Yep, I did that, yeah. Do we have to vote on her? Do we have to vote on all, all?
We have to do them all at once.
Big a list, we go.
Board of Health is Dr. Babe, that.
Yep.
Conservation Board is currently Randy McNutt, but there's another application.
Yep, I have.
Yep, and I.
I'll just run down here.
Yep.
Pam Belknap is VA, like Judy said, SWPCO, A.J. Lyman. Board of Health is currently Heather Babe, we did not receive an application. Board of Adjustment is Brad Hutchinson and Mike Barre. Conservation is Kathy Jordan and Randy McNutt. Those are the ones in this, so.
I would, I would.
Do we do individual, do we just do individual motions?
It's, but no, it's all on one resolution. That's normally the way it is, is for the all desert commissions.
We, when there's more than one person, in the years I've been here, we talk about, we make those ones have multiples, we go through, if there's not, we go through it by board. Or we can discuss what we want, or make a motion for the whole thing, I guess, but you have to pick over, there's two, and some, some of these choices, so.
Yep, well, the, the one motion I would make is Randy McNutt, Conservation. He did reach out, and I talked to him quite a bit, so, and I think he's going to move on to be chair. The other one I talked to was Brad Hutchinson, so I would, I would not have a problem with putting him on. I know, I appreciate Tim being on there.
Mike.
Mike, sorry, Mike Bar being on there.
I would like to see Mike Bar left.
I would make him.
I would like to see Mike Bar left on.
I would.
As, I mean.
I know Brad would, I think his heart's in it, and he, he would, he's really interested in it, so I mean, I would make.
And so is Mike, because he's come in and done it.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I would make the motion for Brad Hutchinson to be on the Board of, is it Board of Zoning?
Board of Adjustment.
Board of Adjustments.
Zoning Board of Adjustments.
Zoning Board of Adjustments, and Conservation being Randy McNutt. Out of those two, and then the others, I'm fine with putting on.
And so we have VA Pam Belknap and SWPCO A.J. Lyman. Said Board of Health, we did not receive an application for Heather Babe, so I don't know if we have.
I would, I would like to go ahead and put her on, and then let's talk to her, and if we need to readjust, I'll, we have an actual Board of Health meeting Monday, so I can make sure I can talk to her then.
We'll have to repost.
Yep, then we can repost.
What is, what is your reasoning for taking Mike Bar off, since he served?
I, I don't know Mike, I don't have any other reason. I know Brad, Brad has talked to me, and other people, people have, I did have somebody call me about Brad, that was, said, hey, Brad would be really good, so.
Before I go further and I get lost in this.
Yep.
We have a motion for, we can discuss this second, I'm trying to stop you, I just, I get lost in the second, you know? So we have Pam for VA, A.J. Lyman, SWPCO.
Yes.
Heather Babe for Board of Health. Brad Hutchinson, Board of Adjustment, Conservation, Randy McNutt. That's the motion, I'll second that motion. Now, now we have a.
And we can have discussion, I guess, right?
Any other questions, discussion? I wasn't trying to stop you, I just forget seconds half the time if I'm not careful.
Normally, in the past, we've, we put the people that are on it back on it.
Yep.
We don't kick them out and, and.
And I'm not kicking anybody out, I'm just saying.
He's reapplied for it, that shows an interest.
Yeah, and we've had other people reapply, and we've tried to, so what we've tried to say is, hey, you know, it's, there's other people in the county that want to serve, they want to be part of some stuff.
Also needs some experience.
There are, yeah, and there are other people on that zoning board that have experience. We're not replacing everybody, but I just, I think it's kind of neat to get some people that have an opportunity to do it. And some, some newer people.
Yeah, and it's, it's.
And like I said, it's nothing against Mr. Bar at all.
But I think it is.
I, I don't know him, so I don't know how it could be.
At boards, it's okay to have things changed here and there, and have good service by people done. Mike's done a good job, so, but let, let's just, things aren't for life, so let's let things. People take turns, I guess, so here we go. So we have a motion for that list I went down, that's second, any other discussion on that? If not, we'll vote.
Mayor?
Yes.
Bones?
Yes.
I'm only voting yep because of the four that are on here, so, yes.
Okay.
I am a yes, but I don't agree with the Board of Adjustment. But I'm still, in order to do the resolution, I guess I have to.
Okay, well, that's that done. Let's see. So number seven on the agenda is resolution twelve, adopting the Page County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Got the resolution right here. Todd, you've been over to the EMA meeting.
Yep, and I reviewed that, and I think it looks really good, I think they've done a lot of good work on it. So I would be in favor of, of supporting and passing resolution twelve twenty.
I'll make that a motion?
Yes, I'm making a motion to, that we sign resolution twelve twenty-two four, adopting the Page County Multi Jurisdictional Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan for Page County.
Okay, got a motion on resolution number twelve there, here, second?
I'll second it.
Okay, go second on that. Any discussion on that? Okay, if not, we'll vote on that resolution.
Mayor?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So that's got that done, we did number eight already, so now we're down to number nine. The third reading of the Page County Ordinance, twenty-twenty-three, we heard Wayne some comments at the beginning. Our issue, I read Carl's on the, on the lighting wording maybe being confusing, that we would have to reprint everything if we wanted to adjust some wording. One idea is maybe we just go ahead, and if we're good with this, we pass it. And then if we need to adjust just that wording, maybe we have, we republish just that wording down the road, here, after this is done. So we don't have to republish the whole thing, that'd be one small area we could get into. And he also suggested in his email to publish the entire, this is passed, the whole.
The whole document.
Yeah, did you see that email?
Yes.
He said, I think that this afternoon.
He did what?
He sent an email this afternoon.
I didn't see this afternoon.
Not very long ago, that suggested that the second time we, if it passes, we, there's a summarized version. We go ahead and have everything all included, done this last time, so. So, anyway.
So this being the third reading, then. So, this being the third reading, then after, after this, are, so tonight, are we voting?
I guess we're voting tonight on it, yeah.
On it, okay.
I think so.
Is.
So, we need any other comments, anybody have any comments on this, um, talked about it for months and months and months, and.
I don't see anything from Carl today.
I'm not sure, came in there just pretty recently already. Uh. I can't get on my email, or I'd read it to you.
He sent one out earlier, but I didn't see one.
Which one was that, does it talk about this ordinance?
He talked about the ordinance earlier, it wasn't today.
Yeah, I thought it was like yesterday.
Yeah, that was.
The one about the lighting and what we have to do, I didn't know he'd send another one out.
It was just.
No.
Just, but he's, yeah, I said you'd have to republish.
So, yeah, with the lighting, but then I think we wanna publish the whole thing again.
But I didn't see where we had to publish it again.
Well, no, I think in any ordinance, you have to publish it before, if you don't wanna read it, the whole thing, and then you also have to publish after it passes, just like a resolution is always published, you know? But it'd be an ordinance, will have to be published. So, um, that, I mean, I, I get home, I can forward that if you guys didn't see that, but anyways, or anybody else has any comments on this, uh, wind ordinance?
I have some discussion, but do you wanna make a motion, or?
Yeah, I would, I mean, I would make a motion that we finalize the Page County Ordinance Twenty Twenty Three dash one, the ordinance admitting the Page County, uh, Twenty Nineteen dash two. Is that, or do I need more into that?
Well.
For the regulating the placement of wind energy conversion systems on property located in the unincorporated areas of Page County Iowa.
Okay, have a motion to, uh, pass this at the third reading, if we publish, so I'll second that motion, have some discussion?
No discussion.
Okay.
I have, I have a, um, statement I'd like to read. Um, I've said many times that I've ne- I'm neither for nor against wind turbines, that it's the property owner's right to do what they want to do with their land. I don't feel that we have the right to restrict the landowner from doing what they want to do with their land, or interfere with their financial decisions. You don't believe in eminent domain, but if you think about it, you're trying to do the same to Page County landowners, in preventing them from choosing what to do with their land. You're hurting them. I've had landowners telling me that this ordinance will seriously impact them from ever putting a wind turbine on their land. Wind turbines may be unsightly, and people may not like what they do to the landscape. They can be a financial benefit to the landowner and to the county, and if we're going to quit depending on fossil fuels, we're going to have to do something to be progressive in this county. I have sat here week after week as you've put more and more restrictions in this ordinance, the mile setback, the ten feet deep feeder lines, the flicker, which changes with the weather conditions. All of these things are just meant to prevent any wind turbines. As I raised objections, I finally said, you might as well say no wind turbines in Page County, which has been your aim all along. You both ran on an anti-wind turbine issue, and you're taking care of your supporters. However, you aren't supporting those people who don't agree with you, and won't come here for fear of being attacked. Most of those people who have spoken against the wind turbines don't even live anywhere near the proposed wind turbine area. My job here as a county supervisor is to, to do what is best for the county and its citizens. I realize we need to protect the county roads, and I do agree with that. But at some point, we need to be progressive. People are complaining about their taxes. What do you propose for additional revenue? You have to realize there's a financial benefit to the county and to individual landowners, or we, or they may not survive. I've actually had many people talk to me about being in favor of wind turbines, not just because of what they could do for the county or the schools, but also because of what they could do for individual landowners. Because of the many Page County citizens who've talked with me, I am voting against this very restrictive ordinance for the reasons stated above. And I would like this whole statement entered into the minutes.
Okay, I didn't wanna interrupt you, and I'd like to respond to some things.
Thank you.
Uh, cause I, well, I have to try to take notes, cause you list the several things that we feel undo, I, I kinda have to stop sometimes. He said, he said, I don't know if you're referring to both of us, or against eminent domain, uh, taken, we're basically doing that to people with the setback?
Yes.
But, you remember, we discussed this at length. They can waive the setback, anyone can waive it, and by not, by leaving the ordinance the way it was, they're using reverse eminent domain on the neighbor, they're allowed to put it close enough that by our own setback, we say they needed fifteen or three with the past setback, then we're admitting that nine hundred feet, by letting them say five hundred foot tall, say, of the neighbor is being taken by a number we're admitting is not good, we wanna be at least that far back in our old ordinance. You're taking that for somebody who doesn't sign up. So, it's a property rights thing, there is no anti-wind, it's property rights, you have, you say they don't have property rights to have one. Well, what about the neighbor who can't build and do what they want because their neighbor put up a wind turbine, it goes both ways.
You put what you wanted to in the wind ordinance, so we might as well.
Yeah, well, you just, you just accused of.
I'm not accusing you of anything, I'm just saying what's been done.
No, that's, that's what you did, so, we do understand that the, that this takes the board out of it, cause they can all sign up, they can, they can waive the setback, anyone can waive, and the parks had how big a setback before?
This wind, this wind ordinance is so restrictive.
Did the, did the park?
Very restrictive.
I have a question, did the parks have a one mile setback?
The parks are different.
They're different than people's homes?
They're different.
So a park has more light than, than somebody's home?
They're different by law.
Well, I'm just, so, so the parks will.
I've made my statement.
I would like to respond also that.
We can move on.
Well, I mean, you've made several statements that were about what we feel. The flicker and the sounds and all these things, those are not real, those aren't real things?
I don't know, I, you know, I, I honestly don't know, I hear differing statements by people.
You don't know that.
I hear differing statements, Jacob, some people are right under them and say there's nothing, others say it's terrible. So, you know, you can take it what you, what you want, the flicker, the flicker, no, no flicker on the county roads, that changes with the wind, with the conditions of the, of the weather. You know, so how can you, um, how can you?
We're not the first, th- this is the sun putting a, a black, a, a.
Right, but how, how can, how can you hold that to anything?
We're worried about sidewalks being slick and people being hurt, and we're worried about visual on the roads, I mean, it's just trying.
I don't wanna argue this, I'm just telling you where I am.
The statement was, I wanna just respond, and then the ten foot deep, we had somebody call, I've talked, in Taylor County hit a line, it wasn't where it was supposed to be, and it wasn't the right depths and things, and was very concerned, it came to the board, that it's not to be restrictive, it's trying to be safe.
Most people are saying six feet is plenty. That's what I keep hearing from everyone, is six feet, the ten feet is way overdue, way over.
Well, if, if you.
I've made my statement, you might as well just go, I called for the question.
Well, I'm trying to respond to some of your statement.
And I'm calling for the question.
Okay, call for the question. Well, now we need to vote on this, and we can talk a little more. Uh, well, but we have to vote on the wind ordinance, we had.
Mayor?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mark?
No.
Okay. That's best, all right. Look at my agenda here. Well, we have up next on the agenda, um, Resolution Fourteen. Here in January, the moratorium on solar was going to run out, and we're right, ready to work on that now, so we need some more time.
Yep.
So Carl put together the wording for that, Resolution Fourteen.
Do you have that resolution?
Yes, I do, right here.
Kristen didn't have one, so, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, uh, it's basically, it, uh, says since we don't have an ordinance yet, uh, we're gonna do one, and, uh, it extends it from the previous one, one hundred and eighty days. Is the, what it is from today, so, plan is to start working on that right away, but we're not gonna get it done the next week or two, so.
Make a motion that we, uh, pass Resolution Fourteen dash Twenty Twenty Four, extending the moratorium on the solar energy construction permits.
Okay, I have second on that.
Additional one hundred and eighty days.
I'll second that. Okay, any discussion on that? If there's none, we'll vote on it, I guess.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mark?
No.
Pauls?
Yes.
I think we need to start on the solar ordinance immediately.
Yeah, I just said that, that's, I know, I know, okay, start work on the solar ordinance. Okay. Let's see, got that done. Number eleven, right from the city of Essex.
Good evening. My voice is starting to go again today, so, I know that's hard to believe.
But yelling.
But, um, we have come up with a contract that was approved by our county attorney. Uh, when we started this, we had other things going on with, uh, administrative, and since, uh, the chief deputy gets five percent of his salary is administrative, I asked him, after we discussed what needed to be in a contract, looked over a couple templates. Um, I assigned this to him, and he sat down with Carl after we had drawn up a, a contract, and then, uh, there was a couple changes Carl wanted made, so we made those. And then, we have a contract here, you should all have a copy of this contract, okay, glad that worked. And I will let, uh, Chief Deputy McCullough go through some of that, if you have any questions, I'll be here to answer them also, we're both very familiar with this contract. And once, if you approve and sign this contract, then it can go to the city of Essex for approval. Does anybody have any questions, first of all?
It's, it's for six months, basically, until.
Pretty much.
Pretty much, six months, I mean, just define what it is there.
July, yeah, May thirty first to July first, dictate that, uh, Sunday, March, my May thirty first.
I'm, uh, Chief Deputy Charles McCullough with Sheriff's Office, uh, this is not really for six months, this is, uh, through July first of twenty twenty four. This is just a temporary contract, or, excuse me, to July.
Almost six months.
Almost six months, yes, it's not quite there.
Yeah.
Uh, if they wish to renegotiate to make this a longer term one, then they need to notify us, uh, by the thirty first of May, that they would like to reconcile and, uh, move a contract forward for that. Um, so, the reason why we, we went on through all that stuff is, uh, for simply that way, it gives us time to find out what more we need, as far as, you know, where we have to ask for another officer, if we're gonna be working a lot more hours over there, you know, that type of stuff. Um, the contract is for fifteen hours per week at the rate of sixty-five dollars and twenty-five cents per hour. Uh, and we are only going to be investigating and, and charging state and federal crimes, we are not going to do city ordinances or anything like that. There, we're going to bill the city of Essex once a quarter, and then they do, uh, the fifteenth following that, or did you change that?
Once a month.
We're gonna bill them once a month.
Yeah.
Within, uh, two normal working days, that was one of the changes in there. So if the month ends on a, a Saturday, then Monday, we will have all the hours figured, and we will send them a bill. And that will be at the end of the month, and then the city will have honor before the end of the following month to have it paid. Uh, such times, if they choose not to pay it, then they will be served notice that this contract is null and void, and in fifteen days, they will be looking for law enforcement services at that time. Um, I'm, I'm, that's just the way business is done. Um, and I think that, that's, that's very amicable that we're trying to help them out, I think their ultimate goal is to find, according to their mayor, to find a, a chief of police, and maybe a couple part-time officers that will do that, um, I know that he is looking very, very diligently for a patrol vehicle. Um, I've given him the, the, I have a law enforcement academy, so he can call up there as a mayor, he can talk to them about what they need. And then there are a lot of other things that go along with that. Um, Todd, you're on the EMA board, um, when the radios were purchased, Essex didn't get a radio because Essex was not functioning as a law enforcement agency, so they will have to, unless the EMA or the nine-one-one board agrees to it, they will have to purchase a mobile radio for the patrol vehicle, as well as walkie-talkies, or portables, as they're called in the contracts. Uh, those are pretty pricey, uh, I believe the one on my hip and Charles' hips are about four thousand dollars apiece, and the one in the vehicles are more. So there's a lot of things that go into that, not just a vehicle. But then, um, our county attorney, pretty much every crime that we investigate, requests either car cam footage, or body cam footage, or interview footage for what they do, so then you're looking at another, um.
These are roughly about two thousand dollars.
For the body cam.
The, the in-truck cameras are approximately. The in-car truck cameras are approximately ten thousand, roughly. There's, there's a lot of costs that they have to, to find money for and stuff like that, they have a big hurdle ahead of them, but we can help them out until we, until they can get to that hurdle. So, uh, if you guys, uh, choose to tonight, obviously, we're gonna ask for the chairperson to sign the contract, and then we will get it to the city of Essex for their attorney to overlook, and get it signed and get it back to us. Yeah, if, uh, you guys, uh, wanna sign this, and City of Essex signs it, then we will take over on January twentieth at midnight. So, it, coming around very, very fast.
Yep. Yep, we all, I looked it over, we looked it over.
Yeah.
If we have any issues.
No, I appreciate your work, thank you for going, going through all that, that's.
Good to work together and help each other out.
Yep, thank you.
I think we need to take action on that.
Yeah, you got a motion?
I will move that we, um, approve this contract for law enforcement to be presented to the city of Essex for signature also.
I second.
All right, any discussion on that? We understand what's going on?
Yep.
Let me vote.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we'll sign that for you.
Thank you, guys, thank you very much.
Hey, thanks for getting that done.
We'll get that done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, just being here. Okay. Step on the agenda, talking about next week's meeting, on the eighteenth. Oh, yeah, there's Isaac training on the eighteenth.
Isaac University.
Yep.
Seventeenth and eighteenth.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, and it doesn't, I.
It's not over till four.
Till three or four, yeah, I can remember if it's four, yeah.
The week of the twenty-second line out, budget will have more than, more than one weeding, probably start in the budget process. So what do you, what do you wanna do, do you wanna?
That'd be fine, just.
Just skip next week?
Skip next week and.
Postpone, or not, I mean, the next week, we'll have several meetings probably. Including.
Sure, we're gonna have several.
Some of those will be all budgets stuff, though, too, but, but, yeah, maybe we can.
Meeting will be six P.M.
Have you guys answered Melissa's to?
I have not yet, but I'm, I'm free, I, I just need to know what everybody else is thinking.
I'm free, I, I could do anytime, so.
Does after, what time, like?
Afternoons work better for me?
What time in the afternoon?
Um, one or two o'clock, if that's possible.
Start after lunch, that's fine.
If that's, yeah, I mean, that works really good for me, but.
You can get your, well, it's no big deal. We got till April, so we start working on next week, so.
Well, you'd have lots of things to do before April.
I know, but we've got till or not, we're not up against the deadline, so.
Right.
So what time is best, two?
Two o'clock would be fine.
Start, so we can do.
How about one or one thirty?
I'll meet at one thirty.
One thirty?
How's that?
That sounds better.
Okay.
Uh, think what's going on next, yeah, let's do the next week.
Any, um, that week, any, any day is good.
It's gonna be several days.
Oh, okay, oh, each, so it's Monday, Tuesday?
I don't know, whatever you don't.
We don't all have to do it all in one week, but yeah, we're working on.
No, we can't do it all in one meeting.
Right.
No, one week, I said.
No, well.
Well, we need a couple days?
Oh, it's gonna take.
We're gonna need, yeah.
Next week, or the week of the twenty-second?
Yeah.
Okay, um.
So I, I don't know where to start. Can't think, it's another week, I'll be on the next weeks, I can't, don't know what's going on exactly.
I'm not sure, I, we need to talk to Melissa too about the time, cause I'm not sure one thirty is a great time to start, but, um, I think you're fresher in the morning, but.
Well, it's fine, we can work on the afternoon, if we need to move to another week, we can. Well, it's fine, we can work on the afternoon, if we need to move to another week, we can. So, I'm good with that, one thirty, two o'clock, I'll do one thirty, it's fine, we'll look at what days might work for us for the board on the week of the twenty-second, okay.
We also need to consider the other elected officials and department heads in the meetings.
Okay, we'll start that process the week of the twenty-second. Uh, but the next week, we will not meet next Thursday night. Because of our, Isaac University, okay, anything else on that?
No.
Next thing's board communication. Had a couple things I took note of, was, uh, Lyle, well, you're still here, I forgot to ask you, you're up here. Uh, the next jail meeting, I looked for venture emails, I don't know if I missed them, if they went spam, but what is the next meeting, what is that?
Next, uh, hang on a second, let me get.
I didn't see it anywhere.
I just looked at that.
If you want, you just forward it if you want.
I don't know, so, I get an email from Rusty with Samuel's group that I'm looking to see. Well, the Page County Jail designer, it'll be a Microsoft Teams meeting, uh, that says we would like to schedule this design for the, my, for the jail committee or the, the team for Tuesday, January sixteenth, from ten A M. to noon, roughly.
Okay. Okay, I was curious about that.
And Jacob, we had talked yesterday on the phone. They decided to go with the site, did you get the email that showed, you didn't get any of that?
I didn't, I haven't seen any of it, unless it's going to spam or something, I tried to look for it. Um.
Check your spam, I think you might have got it.
Okay.
Trying to see who all got it. If not, I'll talk to Tony in the morning and have him forward it on.
Okay.
But, uh, they've got the topographic map down to show what the fall is, um, there was a little discrepancy in the fall, whether it was to the top of the manhole cover or eleven foot down to where the actual sewer lines would meet.
Mm-hmm.
So we had to go into there, there'll still have to be a little bit of dirt work done, but they did go about where we talked about to the west a little bit. I don't know if there'll be enough room for another lot between where this is and Highway seventy-one.
Mm-hmm.
However, with the expansion, um, we had talked down the road of maybe putting in a um, a lean-to shed to store some vehicles undercover, not a heated, just like a cattle loafing shed.
Yeah.
A three-sided with an open front to, uh, maybe prevent some hail damage down the road, which we seem to have a lot of, and, uh, store the vehicles in there as well as a, uh, impound lot, now, the impound lot won't be undercover, but it will be a chain link fence area, uh, so we can do that, looking at other counties, um, I know Fremont County and Shenandoah, they seem to uh, bring in a lot of revenue off of those impounded vehicles, yes, we have to pay for it, too, on those, but it seems to have a lot of revenue that comes in at auctions on that, I know Fremont County just, uh, it was an exceptional off, auction, but I think they were in forty-some thousand, if not fifty thousand dollars that they brought in in revenue off of theirs, now with that, you have to remember they've got the interstate, so a lot of people don't wanna come get them, but if they do have a lien on them, they're also sent to a lien holder, and it goes from there.
Hmm, and the idea for sliding the jail back and leaving some land out front if possible is that someday that land will be used for business there, it's right on seventy-one.
That was the talk at first, um, the, the problem that anybody's gonna have, and I think we're still gonna have to put a sewer or a se- sewer pump in this facility from there to gain the fall, as I said, there was some discrepancy on the, the height, whether it was the top of the manhole cover or to the eleven foot down where the sewer actually connected.
Okay.
And that was a, a misunderstanding, I think, or a discrepancy that they came up with with the topographical map.
Okay.
So these meetings are, are just to be the original jail committee?
I don't know if that is that, I think this one's gonna be a, a Zoom meeting, I'm not for sure. Um, I can try to have somebody get ahold of you two and let you know that, for sure, it's basically, they're gonna go over where we're at with it, as far as the topographic, they're gonna go over the design a little bit, um, to try to pin that down a little more. Um, there was one hall that, uh, looking at the original plan after discussion with, uh, Tony, and then, uh, I think it was Jeff Curtis with, and maybe even Henry with Samuel's group, and I'm throwing Henry under the bus, 'cause I can't remember if he was there or not, and I'll admit that right away, but uh, about putting a hall right off of our reception area to move uh, attorneys back into the jail without having to take them through the, the main booking part and everything else, it would be a secure door that we would move them right into one of the interview rooms in the jail, so that they could meet with their client there.
Those adjustments, yeah.
That was one of the, the simple things to do, in other words, move, I think it was part of the records for the jail, um, talking with Tony, he said, with all the digital stuff, we're not gonna need all that space, so we could put a, a hallway that they can move attorneys in and out, because that seems to be, uh, on a Monday, every time we have District Court Motion Day up here on a Monday, uh, the attorneys seem to show up and wanna finally talk, want to talk to their clients. Changing my words a little better. Um, does anybody have any other questions, and I'll, I'll talk to Tony in the morning and see about that.
Yeah, 'cause I don't know how we.
No, and, uh, you know, if, if it, it's one of those things, I think that, you know, it's, it's part of the planning, and that's where the people that, uh, do this every day need to be in there. And then when it comes out, I mean, it's not a board meeting, but it is a planning meeting for part of what's gonna go down on the blueprints, when it comes time for bids and everything, and that's one of the things that we adamantly want to make sure is done, is it's done correctly and done efficiently.
Right.
Um, there are places that, in this blueprint, like I had said before the vote even came out, we've cut about everything out to make it a safe, secure fil- facility still. And then I think if we, we try to narrow it down or cut down, we're gonna be in trouble, and I don't think that's what the people of the county voted for. Think they voted for something, by no means is it the Taj Mahal, if you've seen the architect's rendering, it's a jail. It'll have a sheriff's office and a dispatch center in it, it's a law enforcement facility.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't need to have all big windows like a lodge or, and I shouldn't say that because other counties do, but my opinion is it's gonna represent the county very well. Um, it's gonna do exactly what it's supposed to do, and it's gonna be secure.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll keep an eye on that, what's going on.
And I'll, I'll, I'll make sure he gets that forwarded to you.
Okay.
And if, I mean, I don't see why you guys shouldn't be involved in that, even if you don't attend a meeting, you should still be able to get that stuff forwarded to you.
Right, so we can.
Sure.
See what's going on.
Day up to date.
Well, if nothing else, I'll have him put you on the, the list of the emails that we get.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay?
Yeah, do that.
Thanks.
Okay, and then tomorrow, I did see an email, a calling tree, so I just took the notes here, so we'll all reach out once they're before six or around six o'clock, take care of that, that meeting, um, with, uh, that Steve Byer from Cass County was setting up, he did cancel that last night with some weather issues, I think.
I saw that.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna be able to go last night against Wednesday night, but he's trying to reschedule, did you see that? He reached out for suggestions.
I sent him, I sent him my email, so he would have that.
Okay, I'm just.
Yeah, I had time to email him back, but.
Just make sure you saw that, those are the three things I had for notes here.
Okay, I have a Board of Health meeting Monday, also a, um, Essential Service Board meeting Monday, and a West Central meeting on Tuesday. And then we go to.
They're busy next.
The Isaac thing. Wednesday, Thursday, yeah, and then my, my reap thing for yet, tomorrow and Saturday got can- canceled.
Oh.
It got rescheduled for next weekend, so I don't know if I'm gonna, I'm gonna try.
Stay there.
That's what I told my wife tonight, but maybe I'll have to just stay up there, but, um, so that, that might be coming up next weekend as well, so. Busy, busy.
Good, anything else?
I had an interagency meeting, I don't think I, did I say something last week about it, anyway? It was just good, so.
Okay, before we get, is there any claims? I didn't see any, okay, on these resolutions, are we getting further here?
They just.
I have the one, let's make sure we do this right, there's, this is the general obligation solid waste fund. What's got twice to be signed, does that have to come back and do it again? It has two auditors' signatures and then chairman twice, do you see that?
It says after closed or something.
It says upon a motion to vote, the meeting was adjourned, so we sign it, passed on January eleventh, and it was adjourned. So just that we adjourn, you see that?
I'd say.
Sign it twice, to understand that. Okay, that means adjourn, okay, I'll sign that. Okay, that one, and what's all these resolutions, here's. As a mitigation, we all sign that. Hey. Judy, here's one you have signed. Retype this one. Sign that, I might retype it, I don't know. All right. There's also a signature sheet on the very back of this.
Oops.
Four-year bid is submitted as a back. Of this board under C is hereby acknowledged, it's a pay deposit. This is the bid picking Robert Baird to do it, there's a signature at the bottom of that, it doesn't define who signs it, but if appropriate, was accepted on the security sold by action of this board, so I would guess I would sign that. To accept their bid, which is what we voted on.
Yep.
Okay, did I get all the resolutions, I'll have to do moratorium, where's it, right here? One. And on the wind ordinance, uh, make sure we. Yeah. I think I did it right, I changed it. So. Lots and lots of paper here. This is gonna be retyped as this twenty twenty-three and stuff, so, might have to redo that, the, the wind ordinance one has the wrong dates on. Have to have him redo that, yeah, it's just, this one I printed off of Carl's, that's a while back, so.
Oh, that's fifteen, would be fif-.
Uh, this is the ordinance, so it's a little different, I guess.
Yeah.
Have to get the correct.
There is, yeah. It's not a numbered one.
Yeah, it'll be an ordinance, not a resolution, so.
It'll be an ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-four, one or one.
Yeah.
Whatever it is.
Like that, what we've had on the agenda, I might have to have him redo, I guess it's twenty-three. I might make sure I have the correct signature page on that, maybe I have to ask him to make sure I got the right one. So I'll have to sign that, we passed it, so I can sign that and send it back to, so I might have to wait on that.
What's wrong with that?
And that's for the wind?
Well, I couldn't scratch it all out, it says passed on this, I wrote eleventh day of January, twenty twenty-four. It'll pass on this eleventh day of January twenty twenty-four, so it says twice, that's the way that reads. I might need to ask you about that. That's at the very last sheet of our, the ordinance. That's what I printed as well.
And that's what Carl sent you?
Yeah.
Does it have? Thank you.
That's just the way the last page reads.
It was passed and approved, there's two different things.
Yeah.
So I'd say you just sign it. Normally, there were three signatures, I'm gonna work that, but I don't know.
I just send him an email, make sure we do that right, so I might check with him tomorrow on that. So, I'll, I'll reach out to him, 'cause I'm kinda making sure I do that right, okay. Did we get all the other resolutions back to you? Yeah, but I just wrote it on there, you can retype it, we can sign it if you want, or whatever, I just wrote it on there, so. What we did, written down, so, if you wanna bring it back and make it look clean, you can, we can do it again. Okay, did we get all of them?
Yes.
There's a bunch tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, we have the minutes from the twenty-eighth, second and fourth. So.
Yeah, and the only, the.
Oh, sorry. I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave, I just spoke with the mayor of Essex, they're in a budget meeting, so he, uh, we discussed it, he said he could come over tomorrow, pick this up, I said, why don't I just drop it by on my way home?
Good.
That way they get the contract, it's in their hands, and we're still trying to meet their deadline.
Yep.
Okay?
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Be careful.
Thank you.
Okay, the.
Um, I, what I was gonna say is, the the minutes for the twenty-eighth, we did amend, or I went through and amended, um, I handed those out to everybody, the, the second meeting for the second, there was no changes that needed to be made, it was, it was fine, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know what everybody else thought, but, and then the fourth um, that was on there, that was the compensation board, and just left everything as is, because that was their meeting, and we really didn't, we don't really have to do anything with that, but it does need to be documented, um, so.
Make a motion.
I would make, yeah, I just make a motion that we pass the twenty-eighth of December, the.
Amendment.
Can you do two separate ones?
Do it.
Do the twenty-eighth and then the second and the fourth.
Do three separate?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, two separate.
Two separate, just do the twenty, okay, so first, my first motion would be to pass the minutes from the December twenty-eighth, or supervisors' meeting, uh, to meet Iowa Public Information Board code.
Okay. I'll second that.
Roll call?
Yeah.
Mayhur?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Clark?
No.
Okay, we'll make a motion on the second or the fourth.
Yep, so then, pass, I make a motion that we pass the minutes for January second and January fourth. As is.
I'll second that.
Okay, you have a motion on the second? We'll vote on that one.
Mayhur?
Yes.
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 Yeah. Yep, yeah, the minutes from the fourth looked really, or the second were.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
All right, let's go ahead and adjourn, motion adjourned, anybody second that?
I'll second it.
All right, we're adjourned, thanks for coming.